This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
I'd like to call to order the May 1st, 2017 Eau Claire School District School Board Meeting. Thanks to Chippewa Valley Community Television for putting us out there on the web and for being here tonight to document this meeting. Laura Brooks and her culinary arts people for their cookies tonight and board members and staff for their participation at this meeting and those attending here tonight and those online. We appreciate you all and welcome. So can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Are we in compliance with the open meetings law notification 19.14, Patty?
Yes, we are.
Thank you very much. Patty has to do that work every week and get all these things out there so people know we're having this meeting. So would you roll call, please, for Cora?
Commissioner Duhax?
Here.
Commissioner Fager?
Here.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Harder?
Here.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Here.
Commissioner Torres? He's absent. Commissioner Booth?
Here.
So tonight is our reorganization meeting. We do this once a year. We will do this with six members of the Board tonight. Our newest member, Dr. Eric Torres, is out of the country. So Dr. Hardebek is going to take over to start the election and then the elected president will take over from there. So I am going to turn the meeting over to Dr. Hardebek.
Thank you. So in accordance with Board Policy 141, this school board shall elect a president, vice president, clerk, secretary, and treasurer. And this happens annually. And for those of you who are interested, a copy of the policy is attached in Board docs. Officers are elected by majority vote to serve for one year or until a successor is elected. So I'm going to call for nominations from the floor. As per Roberts Rules of Order, any member may nominate candidate for president. No seconds are necessary. When it appears that everyone who wishes to has made a nomination, I will ask, are there any further nominations? So at this time, is there any member who would like to nominate a candidate for president?
I have a nomination for Chris Hamburg Boyle.
I was going to nominate Chris Hamburg Boyle.
As was I.
Are there any other nominations? If not, do we have an election by acclamation?
I will take a motion to approve that nomination and then we will, we can do a unanimous, or we can do a voice vote.
Voice vote.
I move that Chris Hamburg Boyle be elected by acclamation.
A seconded?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Madam President.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate that greatly. So I will take over the meeting then. And again, in accordance with Board Policy 141, I'm going to take nominations for vice president. I would like to make the first nomination and I'd like to nominate Joe Luganbill for vice president. Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Catherine Duhax.
Okay, thank you. So when we have two people that are nominated for vice president... Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll go on to a paper ballot for vice president. And then we will find out. Thank you. Then we go on to... Oh, somebody needs to make... We only do this once a year.
Yes, that's actually perfect.
So we go on to the nomination for clerk. So do I hear any nominations for clerk of the Board?
Patty? I nominate Patty. Oh, I forgot.
That's typically Abby.
No, she's clerk designee.
I'd like to make a nomination of Joe Luganbill. Hearing none, I would like to take a vote of acclamation. A motion, please, first. Moved by Commissioner Duhax, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fager. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No? Good. Joe, congratulations on clerk. Now we do a nomination for the election of clerk designee. I nominate Abby Johnson. Are there any other nominations? Yeah? So seeing no other nominations, would somebody make a motion, please? By Dr. Fager, second by Charles Wu. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Thank you. So Abby is clerk designee. The next one up for reelection is our treasurer. Are there any nominations for treasurer of the Board? Commissioner Duhax?
I nominate Erin Harder.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I take a motion from the floor.
A move?
So moved by Commissioner Wu, second by Commissioner Fager. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Congratulations, Erin. You are treasurer of the Board. Last, we need our election of secretary. I take nominations from the floor. Commissioner Luganbill?
I nominate Patty Iverson.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I'll take a motion from the floor.
I move, I move that we elect her by acclamation.
Moved by Commissioner Duhax, second by Commissioner Fager. All in favor of Patty as secretary of the Board, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Thank you. Patty, you are a secretary extraordinary again. How many years have you been doing this? Thirty-two. You know more than anybody on this Board. Thank you very much. Do we do the seating arrangement now?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we'll move next session, right? Or do you... Is everybody going to remember? Oh, there you go. Thank you. Okay, that takes us on to the public forum. Do we have anybody on the public forum tonight? Sorry, Patty, I should have picked it up myself. Nope, okay. So we have no one for public forums, so that moves us on to the Board and Administrative Reports. And we'll start with our superintendent report, Dr. Hardebek.
So I'd like to review the upcoming Board of Education events. On May 2nd, 7:00 PM here at the Administration Building, there will be a meeting of the Parent Advisory Council. On May 3rd, at 11:30 AM in the Administration Building, there will be a meeting of the Budget Development Committee. On May 8th, at 5:30 PM in the Administration Building, there will be a meeting of the Equity Review Committee. On May 9th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, there will be a LEAP Committee meeting here at the Administration Building. And on May 15th, at 8:45 AM at the Administration Building, there will be a Policy and Governance Committee meeting that will be followed later in the evening by the regular school Board meeting. And then on May 24th, we have the Celebration of Service banquet to honor our retirees. That will take place at 5:00 PM at Florian Gardens, and all Board members are certainly invited to attend that meeting. So you will see on the left side, our left side, we have several members who are not with us tonight. Abby and Jim are band parents and they're there at North High School to hear the band concert and to see their students perform. And Tim is away on a family matter. So, welcome, Kay.
Thank you. Here with all the friends.
We have a couple of recognitions tonight. And we want to congratulate Katie Roden, who is the 2017 Wisconsin recipient of the $10,000 AXA Achievement Scholarship. And I think Katie could be with us, could be with us tonight. Katie's been with us before. We've recognized her several times. This is a very important scholarship. It's a national scholarship. There were 10,000 applicants with one winner from each state. And Memorial's Katie is Wisconsin's winner. The scholarship is based on ambition and drive, determination to set and reach goals, respect for self, family, and the community, and the ability to succeed in college. The student school also receives a $1,000 grant. In addition to the $10,000 achievement scholarship, Katie was also awarded a $1,000 scholarship for being one of the 250 Coca-Cola regional finalists, which is another national scholarship. And she was one out of two from Wisconsin. And there were a total of 86,000 national applicants for the Coca-Cola scholarships. So our own Joe Luganbill recommended Katie for both of these scholarships. Roden. Roden. North Junior, John Strzepka, is he here tonight? I bet he's in the band. He has quite an amazing accomplishment to celebrate. John scored the highest possible ACT composite score of 36, a perfect score. And on average, less than one-tenth of 1% of all test takers earn this top score. So we want to congratulate John and we also want to congratulate his parents, Ann and Timothy, for their support of John. So congratulations to him. I just have one announcement tonight, and that is that as part of our follow-up to the referendum, we're holding a series of conversations and meetings with groups with whom we spoke when we were out trying to gain support for the referendum. And as a school board and a staff, we feel it's very important to go back to our community and, one, thank them for their support of the referendum, but, two, to also keep them informed about how we are spending the referendum money and what the construction schedule is for the referendum. So we're going out, we're taking questions, we're trying to keep that conversation going with our community, and we are so grateful for their support of the referendum.
Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Hardebek. That takes us on to my report. I have a couple of things. I walked into the Board Office, I think on Mon... No, it was last week sometime, and Dani Klaszkas was running down the hallway and she was like skipping and jumping up and down with this booklet, which is the Spring 2017 Safe Spaces of the Chippewa Valley. I think some of you might have a copy at your desk. And the... Not everybody got put in this booklet. And so it was recommended service providers were contacted personally by phone. They had to answer questions. Questions included information regarding office climate, gender inclusiveness, expansive, neutral intake forms, relative to LGBTQ. So we are in this booklet, and I think we should be very proud of that. If you turn to page 13, Dani's in here and the Eau Claire School District Family Service Department is in the Safe Spaces booklet in our community. All I could think about was this is the miracle of public schools because we do not control our doors and we serve all kids. And I'm so very proud that we're part of this Safe Spaces. So I wanted to make sure we talked about that. Then, we have a field trip going, the Board, field trip this, to Cardinal Manufacturing on Wednesday in Aliva. I just want to say a little bit about it. I went to their website. I've heard about Cardinal Manufacturing many times, brought it up at the LEAP Committee meeting about just going to visit. "In seven short years, Cardinal Manufacturing has grown from one teacher's idea to an exemplary program that is revolutionizing manufacturing education. Cardinal Manufacturing is a company within a school where students learn about manufacturing and gain firsthand experience." So on Wednesday, I'm scooping up people at 4 o'clock if any Board members want to go. I think some people have...
I have another meeting, so I just do this more.
So what, yeah. And I mean, I think some people have to leave early. It starts at 4:00, it's from 4:00 to 9:00. So if you want to leave and go early and be there right at 4:00, you can do that, too. I called Craig Sodjelski today to let him know that several people from Eau Claire would be coming, and he's aware of that. He said, seek him out so that he can meet everybody, and he's excited that we're coming. Mary Ann, is there anything else on that one? No? Okay. And then, I was sitting in a Director's Special Ed Meeting this week on Monday at CISA 11 or Tuesday, I can't remember. It's been, last week, Friday, that's when it was. We had people from River Falls and Menominee come and present on Project Search. And so as I was into this field trips for school board members, I inquired with Robin to see if that would be possible. And then I would have, I would have expanded on that, but there already is, lo and behold, a gathering on Wednesday, May 31st. I want the Board to be aware of it. I think Mary Ann's got some additional information, too, that she'll share with you. It's a completion ceremony at the end of the year from 10:00 to 11:30 in the Mayo Clinic Health System Auditorium. And I can't be there because I'm going to be being a grandma in Cleveland at the time. So it'd be neat if we had some Board members there. That's an amazing program that provides employment and internships for our kids with disabilities. So hopefully, a couple of Board members can go and let me know if that's possible or let Mary Ann know. Also, I, we talked about, at our work session, about our committee meeting, you know, setting up our committees and having that conversation at our next Board meeting. So Patty and I will work to get the list of the committees out to everybody so that you'll have them ahead of time so that we can have that discussion. Personally, I think we've got some people really cooking on their committees. So I don't know how many changes we need to make, but we'll have that discussion as a group instead of you filling out a piece of paper and telling me what you like. And we had that suggestion from Jennifer and Catherine tonight in order to do it in a more collegial manner like that. So we'll do that at our next Board meeting. And then, we talked about the Celebration of Services. Are any Board members going to be able to go to the Celebration of Service for our retirees? Okay. And then finally, Joe and I talked today after Policy and Governance in lieu of possibly working on a resolution to support that Senate Bill 183, which is the bill that talks about the voucher taxpayer transparency bill. So maybe we'll work on it and then kind of watch for it in your emails for input. I just wanted you to be aware of that, too. Yeah, you're right. And then, finally, I want to end with a little award for our superintendent because Mary Ann, Joe and I went and we testified at the Joint Finance Committee meeting. So we had each other, and Mary Ann went all by herself to Ellsworth and testified as well. And I found the last Go Public shirt that I got from Wisconsin Public Education Network, and I would like to present it to you tonight. So you've got your own t-shirt.
Thank you. My own shirt?
Yeah. So Catherine and I wore ours tonight, just so that we, you would see what it looked like on. Yay.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. And that concludes the President's Report. And that takes us on then to our Student Rep Reports. Angela, Ryan, who's going first tonight?
I'll start tonight.
Thanks, Angela.
AP test season kind of kicked into full gear today with the Chem and Psych tests, and will continue through next Friday. And prom was this last weekend, and the annual mock car crash that's put on by SAD was successful in demonstrating the dangerous aftermaths of driving under the influence. Congratulations to Jazz One for winning their division in the Jazz competition last weekend, and so congratulations to those involved. And last week, there was a Student Council survey that asked students what they wanted to change about Memorial as a whole, like the building, various things like that. So the results will be looked over in the upcoming weeks and will be shared. And finally, Staff Appreciation Week is this week, and Student Council has thank you cards available for those students to write to teachers. And the baseball team is also hosting a staff night with a potluck for all those who work at Memorial. So that's I have for this week.
Thanks, Angela. Ryan, you're up.
Good evening. I have the results from the survey that I sent out at North about two weeks ago. When asked if they believe that all opportunities have been presented to them to be successful in their post-high school life, 66 of students said yes, whereas 34% of students said no. 64% of students said that they would like more of a say in their course offerings, and 36 said no, or that they are satisfied with the current course offerings. Regarding block scheduling, a lot of the respondents said that they did not have enough information to decide. However, about 30% of students are for it and 40 are against it, or satisfied with the current schedule of the school day. When asked if they would consider alternative forms of transportation to school in order to reduce car pollution, about 30% of students said no, whereas approximately 70% of students said that they would consider it. I asked students to briefly describe a time when they were most engaged in their learning, and frequent responses included applications to a real-life setting, hands-on activities, debates, and small class sizes. I then asked them to describe a time when they're least engaged in their learning, and responses included watching videos, lectures, and long in-class packets. When asked to list one possible change that they'd like to see from the Board, they suggested a change in parking passes, such as reduced price for good grades, weighted GPA and less required credits of social studies in English. Finally, students were asked to give a suggestion to reduce perceived disparities between Memorial and North. Frequent responses were to host activities that included both schools, redraw the district brownie lines, and have North students start believing that they're equal. That's a lot of information to take in, so if any of you would like that in writing, let me know so I can send it out in an email. Thank you.
Ryan, could you send it to us all? I'd appreciate that. Yeah, thank you. Dr. Hardebek?
And Ryan, if you will send that information to Mr. Schmidt, he will get that posted on our website.
Thank you very much. How many, how many students took it?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five? Okay, thank you. That takes us to Board Committee Reports. And I was, does anyone tonight have a committee report that they'd like to share? I know Erin does, so why don't we start with Budget Development? Okay? Thanks, Erin.
This one's just brief because our last Budget Committee meeting was devoted entirely to the discussion of OPEB. We had our advisor, Lynda Mont, come and talk for two hours plus, and it was a good, very lively conversation, helped clarify some of, some of the goals that we were trying to meet with candidate OPEB replacements for those employed prior to 2008. And there's a lot of, yeah, as I say, we used all two hours plus. If I can borrow a phrase from our nation's President, who knew it could be this complicated? We are, we are meeting, we are meeting again on, on this Wednesday, May 3rd.
Thank you, Commissioner Harder. Committee Report from Policy and Governance. Thanks, Commissioner Luganbill.
We had a very productive committee meeting this morning. We updated our policy on education of homeless and unaccompanied youth. We finalized a draft new policy on education of children in foster care. We've talked about updating class rank in the district. We received some logistical questions after receiving feedback from both of the high schools, and we'll have a written update at our next committee meeting. We updated our academic freedom policy and our policy on teaching about controversial issues. Neither of those have been updated since 1985, so it was about time. We also updated our policy on curriculum development and evaluation. We finalized updates to our Student Records Policy 347 and completed a brand-new policy, Student Directory Data 347.1. We'll be bringing all of those policies for possible first reading, and we'll be working on a resolution as a committee opposing the referendum reforms that are circulating in the Capitol that would severely limit local control for school districts. And we do have three new policies and an updated policy up for a possible first reading tonight. One regarding public input at school board and Senate Committee meetings, two to strengthen our rating, one regarding our fund balance, one regarding our debt management, and then finally, a new policy on sustainability. And I want to thank Larry Sommerfeld for his help with this one and to Buildings and Grounds for all of their work to make our district green. And thanks to the We Do Telegram for their friendly story this past weekend. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Luganbill. Any other committee reports tonight from the Board? Seeing none, I will go to... Oh, I didn't see your light go on, Catherine. Commissioner Duhax?
You were looking that way.
I'm sorry. I always am looking in the wrong direction.
The Equity Committee will meet next Monday.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So that takes us to our Consent Resolution Agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of April 17th, 2017, the Human Resources Employment Report. Make sure you can pull what you want. Final Notice of Nonrenewal for Teachers on Limited Term Contracts. Reemployment of Certified Staff for the 2017-18 School Year. And the Five-Year Capital Project Bid. Somebody want to move?
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Fager. Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Duhax. Can you take a roll call vote, please, Patty? Thank you. Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Commissioner Duhax?
Yes.
Commissioner Fager?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
That takes us to the school board meeting schedule, and I, oh, we forgot. Shouldn't we do it? We want to go back? I just really need to go back to the Human Resources Report. And Dr. Hardebek is going to take that one. I knew I'd forget.
So tonight, when you approved the employee report, Human Resources Report, you approved the appointment of Mandy Van Bleet to be the new Director of Special Ed... the appointment of Mandy Van Bleet to be the new Director of Special Education. So Mandy, would you stand up, please? Mrs. Van Bleet began her career with the Eau Claire Area School District as an intern in January 2001, after which she was hired as a special education teacher at DeLonge Middle School. She taught for 12 and a half years at DeLonge until December 2013, when she was appointed principal at Sherman Elementary School. She received her bachelor's degree in 2001 from UW Stout and her master's degree in 2004 from Marion College of Fond du Lac. She is licensed to teach special education, cognitive disabilities, grades six through 12, and also has her principal and director of special education licenses. She brings significant experience in both administration and special education to this position, and her knowledge and leadership skills will help to build on the past successes of the Department of Special Education. I know that she's going to be a great asset to us and that she will help lead the implementation of the district's strategic plan and our commitment to the whole child. So congratulations, Mandy. We're looking forward to your leadership in special education. And on tonight's employment report, you also approved Travis Headkey as the Assistant Principal at Memorial High School. So Travis joined ECASD in August 2004 as a guidance counselor at Memorial High School. In his 13 years at Memorial, Travis has served as an at-risk coordinator, participated on the steering committee for the Educational Leadership Program, and for the last four years has been the Student Services Department Chair at Memorial. Travis received his bachelor's degree in 2002 from UW Eau Claire and his master's degree in 2004 from UW Stout. He completed his coursework for educational leadership through Vitturbo University in 2009. Travis has licensures for school counselor as well as for principal. Travis's educational background, his leadership experience, and his experiences working with students and staff at Memorial make him uniquely qualified to further the district's strategic plan with its emphasis on meeting the needs of the whole child. So Travis, best wishes to you as you take on your new leadership role at Memorial.
Thank you. You're very welcome. I knew I was going to forget when they tack things on in the end like that. I'm so sorry. So we go on to now the individually considered resolutions. The first one is the health and dental rates, and who is going to, you going to take that key? Thank you.
So at the meeting in March, March 27th, the board approved the 17-18 health and dental rates. At that point in time, however, what we weren't aware of was that those rates didn't include the plan design change that had been proposed to the health insurance organization related to a change for our emergency room visit co-pays. So with that change going from 100 to 250, being an employee responsibility, that did make a small change to the actual dental, or sorry, the health rates in the premiums. So you can see by the attachment that the rates have gone down a couple of dollars for each of the plans. Overall, it's still the same thing, but to be able to move forward with open enrollment for our employees with the health insurance plan, we needed to make sure that this revised premium plan came forward to the district. In addition to that, if you looked at the rate sheet, you'll notice that there's a vision component on the rate sheet, which is new. This will be the first time that the district has offered a vision plan for our employees. This is very similar to our short-term disability plan, in which the district doesn't pay for any of the plan. It's a voluntary optional plan for employees to take advantage of. We did a lot of research into different options that were out there, and you can tell by the, the rates that are listed on the vision component that this is a very affordable plan for families who have vision needs. Each of our employees who's on the health insurance has a, a vision exam available through our health insurance annually, but this plan is more for all of the components that go along with it. So that's something new that we're just introducing to our employees with this round of the open, open enrollment that's starting tomorrow after hopefully the board approves these new rates. So any questions on that?
I, I have one question. I had a call. What we're voting on tonight does not have anything to do with our retired folks?
No. Well, the vision plan doesn't, I mean, they would still be eligible for that as well because it's a voluntary program, but the dent, or the health and dental rates, no, because retired folks already have a set amount that they're given regardless of what the rates are, so that all stays the same.
And the vision piece within their health plan is still there as well?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So we need to have a motion?
I say move, so we pass this.
A second?
Second.
So moved by Commissioner Fager. Can we take a roll call vote, Patty? Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Abstain.
Commissioner Vu?
Abstain.
Commissioner Duax?
Yes.
Commissioner Fager?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle? Because I asked the question about the retired piece, then I feel I can vote yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. The, oops, the next one is the school board meeting schedule. And I think I looked at the plan, and that's, Dr. Hardaback's going to lead us through that one, I think. I can look back.
And we'll get the, we'll get it on the screen.
Yep, you're right there.
Pull the, pull the schedule, pull the calendar up.
Dr. Hardaback, we can't bring that on the screen because it's part of the executive summary. It's embedded into that, so. People pull it up? Because you can see, no, I've got it. I've got it. I just, I thought we could pull it up on the screen for the audience.
So as you look at the calendar, you will see that we had several meetings that either bumped up to a vacation or a break. And so if you will look, and Patty, if you will look at the ones that we have changed, you'll see that the rationale for changing the September meetings has to do with Labor Day. And we thought by having it on the 11th and the 25th, we could maintain that two-week break between each meeting, which is helpful to staff. Then in October, we have five Mondays in October, and it will allow two weeks between the September and the October meetings. So we changed those as well. Then, the original meeting dates for January were January 1st and 15th, but because of the New Year's Day holiday, we're moving that to January 8th and the 22nd, and asking you to move the March 19th meeting, which falls just within spring break, to March 26th, and then having our July meeting in 2018 on July 23rd, which is the same protocol that we follow this year.
Thank you. So we're going to, are we presently one meeting in July this year?
Yes.
Okay. And we'll go to one meeting in July next year?
Typically, we have a, only one meeting in July, because people go on vacation, and it's sometimes hard to get everyone together to get a quorum.
I kind of forgot, though, because we had two in July this past year because of the referendum, so. Did we have two in July?
No, we only had one, but we had a.
Must have seemed like two.
We only had one. I think we had a work session, though, maybe, or somewhere.
Thanks. Thanks for, for helping me out on that, Mary Ann. Okay, that adjourns to committee? Oh, we need a vote, yeah.
Move approval of the schedule.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Vu. All in favor, say aye. Pose no? Okay, thank you. Committee reports. We are going on to the discussion and possible first reading of Policy 188, Public Input at School Board and Standing Committee Meetings. We worked on this in order for us to become more, across our committees, that we are doing them the same. Jo, do you want any input on that?
Just to align us with the board and its various committees. I know the county and city have clarified and continue to clarify their, their policies on this, and we didn't really have anything with how the public can interface with us in our committees, so we're clarifying that with this policy.
Thanks, Jo. So Commissioner Duax?
There are a couple of typos that I'd like to mention.
Go ahead.
Paragraph three, line four. It says President of Chair. I think it's supposed to be or Chair. And then, the last paragraph, line one, the board and its committees, it has an apostrophe, and it shouldn't be there. It's a plural word. No apostrophe.
And we didn't look at changing either of those paragraphs, so we didn't even read them, but we should have. So thank you.
So can we read it, please? Start with Commissioner Fager.
So to just the last two, those two bullet statements that have highlighted?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Okay. During the regular committee meeting of the Board of, no? I'm sorry. During the regular meeting of the Board of Education, under items for discussion, citizens may ask questions and/or request clarification on the topic of discussion after the board has discussed the item. This is not a requirement to sign up previous to this discussion. Each board member, each board committee meeting agenda will provide a 15-minute time period at the beginning or at the end of the committee meeting in which citizens may address the committee to express viewpoints or concerns on agenda items. The 15-minute time period may be extended at the discretion of the committee chair or by a committee motion. Each citizen will be allowed up to three minutes to address the committee, providing she, he, has additional slash new information that has not been previously shared at the meeting. Citizens wishing to address the committee during the 15-minute time limit must state their name and address. Their comments will be recorded in the minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Luganbill.
And I'll just say, one reason why we are bringing this forward is we've, at times, had folks from the public sit with the committee and speak during the meetings for an extended period of time as if they're committee members. And just as we wouldn't want that at the board level, when we're doing our board work, the committee has to do their work, too. But we still want to have a process in place, so hopefully, this will help with that.
Thank you, Commissioner Luganbill. Commissioner Duax?
And I, I think that's very good, because we do want the input, but we don't want somebody advocating for something and not letting go of it. Just need to say it and be done.
Any other discussion? I open it up to the audience. Any discussion from the audience, input? Seeing none, we'll go to the next item. Discussion and possible first reading of new policy 662.3, Fund Balance. Commissioner Luganbill, you want to speak to this at all?
Well, this is revisions to our current policy, which is what the Bound Council had recommended, is that we add a range of what an adequate fund balance is. And then what we also did is we added the process for, for being recommended to the board, that we commit fund balance resources for a specific purpose, and then we also look at a period that, that we would have being two years for that. So it's just those three changes. So it's really, we really only have to look at the first paragraph and then that second to last paragraph in terms of reading.
Commissioner Harder, would you like to read those two paragraphs, please? To get them on the record?
Yep. The board recognizes that maintaining an adequate fund balance in the district's general fund of 25%, 33% of the operating budget is essential to the financial stability of the district and sound fiscal management. The board also recognizes its responsibility to ensure that the district's fund balance resources are used properly and reported in accordance with applicable legal requirements and generally accepted accounting principles for governmental entities. On the, so the other changed paragraph reads, "On the recommendation of the superintendent, the board may commit fund balance resources for a specific purpose for a period not to exceed two years. To the extent board action regarding any fund balance amounts under this policy constitutes a budget amendment under state law, i.e. a change in the amounts of the appropriations or the purposes for such appropriations as stated in an adopted school district budget, a two-thirds vote of the entire membership of the board shall be required, and a legal notice of the action taken shall be issued as required by law."
Thank you very much. Any more discussion from the board? Dr. Hardaback?
I did want to note, because we had had a couple of emails over the weekend about this policy, and the idea of, you know, having, not having a limit on the, on the fund balance or a range on the fund balance. And I would just point out to the board that at 20% of your, you know, that would give you about two and, about two, maybe two months of operating. With a range between 25 and 33%, that would give you three to four and a half months of operational expenses. So if something untoward were to happen, you would have a little bit of a cushion to get you through possibly the school year.
I know, I didn't have to have those discussions years ago, but there we go. Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Any discussion from our audience? Seeing none, we'll go on to the discussion and possible first reading of new policy 663, Debt Management. Who would like to do that one? Commissioner Luganbill, you want to read that one?
I can read it, and I'll also just say this is another one that is new. It's a short policy, but no matter long or short, this is just another one that was recommended to improve our credit rating. The Eau Claire Area School District shall establish and maintain well-defined debt management guidelines for issuing new debt as well as managing outstanding debt to sustain strong debt management. The school board supports prudent debt management practices, which, one, maintain financial stability, two, preserve public trust and transparency, three, minimize costs to taxpayers, four, minimize borrowing costs, five, preserve access to financial markets, six, demonstrate adequate administrative oversight of debt management to credit rating agencies. The superintendent or their designee shall develop guidelines and administrative rules ensuring strong debt management.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board? Questions? Any discussion or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll go on to the discussion and possible first reading of new policy 744, Sustainability. This one's a little bit longer, right? I think? So Catherine, you want to start this one? Charles, do you want to do any of it? Okay. And I'll help you if you need help, okay?
The Eau Claire Area School District affirms our belief that pre-K-12 faculty, staff, and students have a responsibility to take a leadership role in conducting activities as responsible stewards of the physical environment and using educational activities to promote educational awareness, local action, and global thinking. In its educational functions, the district will strive to conserve natural resources and support their sustainable use, conduct affairs in a manner that safeguards the environmental health and safety of the students, faculty, staff, and communities, continue to reduce the use of toxic substances and the generation of waste, promote strategies to reuse and recycle those wastes that cannot be avoided, purchase replacement facility equipment that reduces energy consumption, the need for water resources, and the release of greenhouse gases, continue to use green cleaning practices whenever possible, purchase renewable, reusable, recyclable, and recycled materials, conduct our business practices in accordance with this policy. In its educational and research missions, the district will strive to foster an understanding of and a responsibility for the physical environment, ensure that individuals are knowledgeable about the environmental and health issues that affect their discipline, encourage environmental research, conduct research and teaching in an environment Conduct research and teaching in an environmentally responsible way. Provide a forum for the open flow of information among governments, international organizations, industry, and academia to discuss and study environmental issues and their relationship to other social and educational issues. In its student and employee relations, the district will strive to delineate individual responsibility, guide action for ensuring safety and minimizing adverse environmental impacts in the implementation of this policy. The district will consider full compliance with the law to be the minimally acceptable standard and will exercise whatever control is reasonable and necessary to avoid harm to public health and the environment, whether or not such control is required by regulations. The district will initiate, promote, and conduct programs that fully implement this policy throughout the district and the global community."
Thank you very much. Discussion and part of the board? Anyone from, go ahead. Commissioner Duax?
Well, this is so complex. I just wondered if it would be beneficial to have examples from the committee, to give examples for a paragraph or, um, a part, a part of this. Uh, what we have in mind, maybe the staff has a list of toxic things that they try not to use, or, you know...
There was a report that does list a lot of that, that, um, is available. Like, I don't think everyone got a copy, but we, yeah, we're sent to everybody. So, um, maybe what you're saying is we need to make it widely available to everybody. Okay, good.
Well, um, the county puts out materials that they give out to everybody who's recycling, and they have a list of things that are harmful and not recyclable and are recyclable. I just thought it might benefit all of us.
Any other discussion? Thank you. Anybody from the audience have any input or discussion? Seeing none, uh, takes us on to the request for future agenda items. Are there any? Seeing none, um, oh! Would somebody like to adjourn, please? But before, when we adjourn, I just preempt this. I need a date for agenda setting with whoever the next person... Yes, and then we'll convene into closed session. But, okay, can we do the agenda setting before closed session?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So would somebody like to move to, um, move, um... To closed session?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Vu, second by Joe? Commissioner Luganbill, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at seven one five eight three nine five zero six seven or online at valleymediaworks.org.